Good evening and welcome. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in tonight. We are going to call this meeting to order. It's seven P M on March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the second regular city commission meeting for the city of Ormond Beach, and we are in commission chambers. Our leisure services director, Robert Carolyn, and then our finance director, Kelly McGuire, both who do an excellent job for the city, served as our greeters tonight. And hopefully they made you feel welcomed and helped you get a card if you need one to speak on any item. I need to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, we have recording secretary Taylor Lockhart. Next is our city clerk, Susan Daughters. Then we have Commissioner from Zone One, Lori Talland.
Hello, everyone.
Commissioner from Zone Two, Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left and your right, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone Three.
Good evening and welcome, everybody.
Then our deputy mayor and Zone Four Commissioner Harold Brierly.
Good evening, everyone.
City manager Joyce Shanahan. Assistant city manager Claire Whitley. City attorney Randy Hayes. And then way to my left and way to your right, our police chief Jesse Godfrey and fire chief Howard Bailey, joining us as well. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. And at this time, if you would please silence your cell phones and rise for the invocation given by Pastor Cord Bear from Tomoka Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray. Father, it's with tremendous amount of gratitude. We say thank you for the day that you blessed us with, for the breath and life that we possess. Thank you for the free gift that we have to be human beings of free will and choice. We're so grateful for those gifts that are common to all of us. I'm grateful for the establishment of government, and to that end, Lord, we pray collectively tonight for your wisdom to be upon this group. We pray, Father, as they lead, that you would simply be the one that guides them and directs them, that protects our great city. We thank you most of all for your love for us that you bestowed upon us in Jesus, and we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have the Adams Cameron team come on forward and our, including our deputy mayor Harold Brierly. We have a special presentation celebrating a pretty big anniversary. Deputy Mayor, if you'll hold that while I read it, and then I'll let you present it. Whereas Adams Cameron and Company Realtors was initially established in nineteen sixty-three by Helen Adams. The company originally called Helen Adams Realty became Adams Family Realty when Robert Adams joined the firm in nineteen seventy-four. In nineteen seventy-eight, it merged with Cameron Realty and now is well-known as Adams Cameron and Company. And whereas Adams Cameron and Company is the largest real estate firm in the greater Daytona Beach area, it serves all of Volusia and Flagler with three hundred commercial and residential real estate agents. There are seven primary offices located in Daytona Beach, Deland, Flagler County, Port Orange, Ponsonlet, and two in Ormond Beach. And whereas the firm, which also includes title and auction services, continues to grow and expand and remains a family-run business with John Adams serving as president. And whereas Adams Cameron and Company is pleased to continue the legacy started by Helen of bringing people home, focusing on service, dedication, and commitment to their customers who they recognize as being the lifeblood of their business. And whereas Adams Cameron and Company gives back to the community through the Adams Cameron Foundation, which donates to a wide variety of charitable causes and several long-term benefactors, including the American Heart Association, American Cancer Society, Darcy Acres Scholarship, and Advent Health Hospital Foundation. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, on behalf of the entire commission, am proud to proclaim March twenty-first as the day to recognize Adams Cameron and Company Realtors in the city of Ormond Beach and encourage all residents to join me on this day in celebrating in memoriam of Helen Adams for founding the company sixty years ago and the contributions made by the firm to the community. Congratulations and thank you. All right. Kelly, are you coming up for this one? And Christine, awesome. Come on up, Chris. All right. You guys have heard me rave about Kelly and Chris before. They do an amazing job with our budget process. Every year, we're recognized for excellence in budgeting and accounting. We pride ourselves on that, and you guys make it happen just year after year after year, and we're so grateful for that. This proclamation recognizes Florida Government Finance Officers, which is a professional association founded in nineteen thirty-seven and serves more than three thousand three hundred professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges and universities, special districts, and private firms. And the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is dedicated to being a professional resource for the city and the finance department by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas the Ormond Beach Finance Department does an exceptional job year after year preparing and managing the city's budget and finances, the city of Ormond Beach has received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting annually since it began participation in the program in nineteen ninety. And whereas the government finance, that's thirty-three years for anybody that's counting. The Government Finance Professionals Week, am I right, thirty-three? I think you. You guys double-check me. Sponsored by the F G F O A and all its member governmental organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services they provide to the city and the community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. And that's why you two, you two are here under the steady leadership of our city manager Joyce Shanahan. Based on all that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim March twentieth through March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the city of Ormond Beach and encourage all residents to join as we extend our appreciation to all the government finance professionals throughout the state and especially here in the city of Ormond Beach for their service. Congratulations. We will do audience remarks. I have one card. Sean Harmon. Come on up. You have three minutes.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to speak to you here this evening. I am here concerning two intersections on Rosewood Avenue here on Ormond Beach. One is at McIntosh and Rosewood. We just had a critical motorcycle car accident a week ago Saturday, where one is still, I think, in the hospital under critical condition. I have lived at the corner of McIntosh and Rosewood for the last ten years, and I have seen accident after accident after accident. They keep getting worse. People are running the stop sign. They're speeding down McIntosh like it's the raceway over on Daytona Beach. We, I have over thirty signatures from concerned residents and citizens in that area that would like to see a four-way stop. We don't think that we would like to have a, excuse me, speed bumps, because I have spoke to people on Hernandez, and they say they speed up to the speed bump, and then they go over the speed bump, and then they speed again. I understand that a four-way stop is not going to stop everything, but I do believe if those motorcycles coming down McIntosh a week ago Saturday had a stop sign, that accident would have been, wouldn't have existed. Again, it's just a mess there. I have just spoke to Sean Finley, who is the Director of Public Works, who says it's already in process with that. The second one that I'd like to address real quick is at the corner of Yonge Street in McIntosh, the parking situation for the Easy Does It Club. They do not have respect for any of our people that live on the streets. They are parking any way they feel like it, wherever they feel like their parking going the wrong way. It's causing a major accident there. Nothing has happened yet, thank goodness, but I have over a hundred pictures that I'm very concerned, and everyone that signed the petition is concerned about that intersection as well. But I have a picture where the city bus is coming down the street of the fishtail. That's already a dangerous intersection. Cars are parked on each side, so the city bus is already having trouble getting through there. But a major big truck for East Coast Pools was coming at the intersection at the same time. The East Coast Pools truck had to back up so the city bus could come through. I don't ride the city bus, but I have twice in the last two weeks just to speak to the city bus drivers, and they are very concerned with that intersection as well. So I'd like to bring it to your attention. I know you guys probably don't drive down that street every day like I do, but every one of the people that have signed it is very concerned.
Thank you. And it sounds like you're already on the right track in a lot of ways. If you'll provide those pictures to the city manager.
Sure.
Thank you. She'll make sure we see them all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, the minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. Those are the March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes. And before we go to the consent agenda, I believe there was one item staff was requesting to pull, and I'll go to the city manager for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is requesting to pull ten A, the second reading of an ordinance amending the Leisure Service Advisory Board. We would like an opportunity to take that back to the Leisure Service Advisory Board and ask for their recommendations. And if so, then we'll receive those, and if it's something they want to continue to do, then we'll bring that back to you for your consideration.
And do you need a motion to table that? It was ten A.
I move to table item number ten A.
Second.
Moved and seconded to table ten A, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash fourteen on second reading. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
I was just going to say, having served with leisure services for over twenty-four years, they definitely know what they need, and they have not been able to reach that quorum that they need to make decisions. So I think that's, it's very good that the city will allow the board to work these issues out and then come back to us with staff's help with a good solution. So thank you for pulling that, Shanahan.
Yep, perfect comment. I agree. Commissioner Talland, I'm grateful that they're willing to continue to work on finding the appropriate solution, and I'm confident that working with them, we can get there. Any other comments? Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for catching that. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland, yes. Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we are now on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And at this time, if any member wanted to comment on any of the consent agenda items, this would be the appropriate time. Commissioner Persis.
Yes, I just would like to say I'm thrilled that our police are getting upgraded firearms and accessories to go with those firearms. And I love seeing that we're getting a new Ford Police Responder F-50 Crew Cab also. I know it's hard to get vehicles like those now. It's difficult to get them, so we're lucky to have them. And I'm very excited about the Performing Arts Center renovation project. That's going to be wonderful when that is all finished.
Agreed. Commissioner Sargent.
I echo that with the firearms, and it's a, I kind of a question why I should have pulled it, but I'll address that later with Joyce. It is a very expensive item, but I called around and we are getting them for almost cost of what those weapons cost. So I think that's a great deal. It's inflations here, though. If you look at these items, we're paying more for almost, I mean, several of these items are all increased cost. It's real. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Talland.
And I just wanted to echo my support of the PAC as well, being on leisure services. That was a topic that we were pushing for quite a while, and Lucy Jackman has done an amazing job raising funds. It's never easy to spend money when everything is inflated right now. And I know that that might be a little bit of a burden, but I do think that the momentum of the project needs to continue, and it will definitely be an asset to the community.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to tag on that, I think it's just kind of long overdue, so, perfect.
Thank you all for those comments. I just wanted to point out, I'm excited about seven D, the Water Reclamation Facility Ultraviolet Disinfection Project. Millions of dollars finally getting underway. And when you can put out cleaner water, that's only good for the environment. And so, and thank you to Tom Lee for his help in the Florida Legislature for their help with that as well.
Mr. Mayor, we just know that water is not as glamorous as a performing arts center, that's all. But we do appreciate having clean water in the city.
No, and I, I mean, the Performing Arts Center, there are so many caring, dedicated people involved with that committee. And Lucy Jackman, of course, is the leader, but there are others. And so to see their excitement and passion for that project, that's only going to benefit Ormond residents for years to come. It really is, it's a good one. So thank you all. All right, we'll move now to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read eight A.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash sixteen. An ordinance amending chapter one, general administration, article four, schedule of development, review, and impact fees, section one dash twenty-eight, utility installation fees of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by updating the fee schedule for meter costs, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash sixteen, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash sixteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Eight B.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen. An ordinance amending chapter two, district and general regulations, article three, general regulations, section two dash fifty, accessory uses subsection N, fences and walls of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code to allow a fence or wall set back less than three feet to a right-of-way with review and approval of the Site Plan Review Committee, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, this is second reading. I don't have any cards.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierly.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Eight C.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen. An ordinance amending chapter four, plan review and subdivision, article one, site plan review procedures, section four dash zero three, Site Plan Review Committee, S P R C, established of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the S P R C coordinating liaison and updating the process for neighborhood meetings, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Eight D.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash sixty-eight. A resolution approving a special exception development order authorizing two parking spaces in the southeast corner of the parking lot of the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens at seven eight East Granada Boulevard to be used for the placement of a cottage-style garden shed, authorizing the execution issuance of the development order, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash sixty-eight, read by title only.
Thank you. I do have one card from the applicant, and first we'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, planning director. This is a request at seventy-eight West Granada. The request is actually in the rear parking lot to install a garden cottage shed. When, with the construction occurred, they have been using this pod at these back two parking spaces. The request before you tonight is wanting to authorize further lease the ability to put this shed. And then the second is the location, removing two parking spaces. The art museum has looked at many different options on the site. None of the options would allow the preservation of the gardens, so the idea was to use the parking space. They've updated this rendering, which shows they're matching the historic structure on the property, so it's not like a typical low shed. It's an architecturally treated shed meant to blend into the property. The location, again, is the far two parking spaces. Within your packet, there was a letter of no objection from the abutting property owner, and staff has recommended approval. The planning board recommended approval with a seven to zero vote in their review. And the applicant is here for any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? All right. Appreciate it. Any questions for the applicant?
I just have a comment to make. So I'm very appreciative that we're not disturbing the gardens anymore than had to occur with the construction of the beautiful museum. I did talk to the gardener, Jeanette, who's been there a long time, and I've worked with her on the greenhouse project and other projects, and she is fully endorsing this as well. It makes it easier for her to store her tools, her machines, her plants, everything that she does, and not disturb the garden as much. So without a doubt, I think this is a perfect place for this project.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes, and I just, Stephanie, thank you for being here. I don't have any questions for you. I just have comments. And I just want to thank you for continually doing things to make Ormond Beach just look better. And this, this cute little cottage just, you know, flows together in that, in that area. And I know how hard you all are working, and it's just making, you know, that area of our city look so beautiful. So thank you so much for this, and I know it's going to go really well with everything, so thank you again.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Brierly.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir. Thank you. I just want to, I will also echo that support for the shed. I mean, I kind of like how it complements the Simmons Cottage. I do, you know, I kind of agree as well. I think there was one letter in our packet from a resident in the heritage regarding parking, and I do hate losing parking in our downtown, but I do think that this is necessary. So maybe at some point, we can maybe look at, maybe more parking options around the gardens, because it does get busy over there during events. But I think I fully support this.
Agreed. Anyone else? Stephanie, did you want to say anything? You don't have to. I don't think there's any questions for you. I'd like you to recognize Ms. Taylor for the amazing work she does as well. I know you do a lot, but her longtime history of protecting and taking care of those beautiful gardens is incredible.
That's actually what I wanted to come up to do, to say first, thank you. I am Stephanie Mason Teague from the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens. And with me today is our fabulous gardener, Jeanette Taylor. And this will really support all the work that she does and help her to care for these gardens. You know, unless you have walked them recently, it's nearly two and a half acres. So you can imagine how busy Jeanette is on a daily basis, and the gardens are beautiful. And we are working on a way to count the number of visitors each day. But I can tell you, especially during spring break, we had hundreds of people through the gardens on a daily basis last week, and the summer is just the same. So the work that she does is invaluable and irreplaceable. And thank you for your positive comments about this garden structure shed. It is beautiful, and I think it will be such an asset for Jeanette in her work.
Awesome. Jeanette, would you mind standing up so we can give you a round of applause? Well deserved. And Stephanie, thank you. When I drive by that now newly updated museum complex, I'm just really blown away with how beautiful it is and what an incredible, just a gem in the heart of our city that everybody is really appreciative of and loves. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just tag on, I just think, you know, Jeanette is, she's an absolute treasure to the city of Ormond Beach. I know my grandmother used to deal with her back a long time. Well, we won't say how long ago it was, but she always thought a lot of Jeanette, and you do a great job over there. We thank you so much.
Absolutely. Good stuff. All right. I don't have any other cards. Just need a motion and a second on eight D.
I move approval of resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash six eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly.
Yes.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And I will close the public hearings and we'll move to nine A.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen. An ordinance extending temporary emergency administrative procedures to provide for the continued expeditious and coordinated management of building permit applications and fees, waiving special permits and fees issued issued for the removal of certain trees, establishing a method of enforcement of the Florida Building Code such that onsite permits may be issued by appropriate city staff for repair of damage caused by Hurricane Ian, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first and only reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash nineteen, read by title only.
Thank you. And again, I'll ask our planning director, Steven Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening. The, uh, next two items are, um, the waiver of permit fees. Uh, we're still requiring permits for hurricane damage, but we, we, uh, are encouraging the extension. The ordinance is written to follow the governor, Florida governor's executive orders, so they can be extended, um, with that extension. Staff is recommending approval. Um, and there are still a number of homeowners still trying to get permits and fix damage caused by hurricanes. So, we believe that this ordinance and the next one are positive.
Fantastic. Thank you, Steven. Any questions for Steven on this? Alright, I don't have any cards.
I, I have one question. So, is this just a timeframe? Um, is this have a, an end when, when these fees will go back into place? Or is this?
So, it, it's been extended several times by both Volusia County and, um, the Florida governor. So, when those, those extensions stop, we will make a decision to see if we still have people who are having those issues. And we may ask to do locally. But otherwise, we would follow the, the governors. And we still do have people trying to do work.
And it's only for hurricane repairs?
Correct. It, it's only, it's only, that's a great point.
Yeah, because it, you certainly would not want this to be abused, um, which it has the potential to be abused, for sure.
I, I think people are still probably having a hard time finding contractors to come up and do the work, to be quite honest.
So, yeah, I mean, they're, they're still, still trying to repair from the hurricane damage.
Yeah, the, the term actually extends, it's, it's concurrent with the governor's executive order. And then extensions that flow from that executive order. So, once that terminates, then this naturally terminate. And then Volusia County also is extending, uh, their, um, declarations of emergency. They do theirs by charter and, and seven-day increments. So, um, everything is working kind of concurrent with each other.
Thank you. Thank you. Just need a motion and a second.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash nineteen.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine B.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty, an ordinance extending temporary emergency administrative procedures to provide for the continued expeditious and coordinated management of building permit applications and fees, waiving specific permits and fees issued for the removal of certain trees, establishing a method of enforcement of the Florida Building Code such that onsite permits may be issued by appropriate city staff for repair of damage caused by Hurricane Nicole, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first and only reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have any cards. Anyone have any questions for planning director? No? Alright. I just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty. Second.
Moved and seconded. Steven, was there anything you needed to put on the record on that one? Thank you. Uh, if there's no further discussion, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And with that, we will go to reports, suggestions and requests. And tonight, as always, we start with city manager, Joyce Shanahan.
I'm grateful that you started. Good evening. Um, first of all, um, staff would like to propose a workshop on, I, I should say a shade meeting on April eighteenth to discuss, discuss our collective bargaining with the police to update you where we're at with that. That would be at five thirty. And I will remind you that April eighteenth is your only meeting for that month, cause there's cut, schedule conflicts about that. Does that work for everyone?
It said five thirty.
Five thirty?
It does.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, a couple of things, um, just to kinda update you, if you're reading ahead, your budget calendar will, uh, will do our operating budget workshop on July eighteenth. Um, capital budget is usually in May, but I don't know that specific date. I don't see Kelly here, so we'll get that out to you. Um, there was a request to consider moving, um, the August third meeting. Um, in so doing, uh, you could have a meeting on the first and the fifteenth. Um, or you can move both to Thursdays on August third and twenty, and seventeenth. So, um, or August eighth and twenty-second. Yes.
I had asked about that. And I have resolved my issue, so we don't, for my benefit, we do not.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So, we'll, we'll just keep the meetings as is, if that's okay with everybody. There are two public meetings that are scheduled with city staff and consultants to discuss the impact fee study. The meetings are on Wednesday, March twenty-second at five thirty P M. And Monday, March twenty-seventh at ten A M. In room one oh three. Uh, just a few updates from the police department. We recently had our accreditation review, and it was completed. And the exit interview showed only one finding out of two hundred and s- two hundred standards. So, the accreditation committee comes in and they review all of our standards. And they only found one that was in non-con compliance, but they were able to, um, correct that onsite. So, um, we're really pleased about that. The, uh, submission has been made to the accreditation board, and we should hear sometime in June about our reaccreditation. So, we're really, we're very, very proud of the police department. There are not many agencies that are accredited, and that gives you a higher standard and a, and a, um, I think a better department. And, uh, we certainly have a wonderful leader in Chief Godfrey. So, we're very proud of him and his whole leadership team. Also, I just wanted to recap Bike Week. We had, first of all, amazingly enough, we had none of our officers injured during Bike Week, which is always a, a good thing to, to note. We had five hundred and fifty-two traffic stops. We issued eight hundred and twenty-two citations or warnings. We made seven felony arrests. We made eighteen misdemeanor arrests. We did, we arrested four DUIs. And we wrote two hundred and twenty, I mean, two hundred and eleven reports. There were forty crashes, four of which were considered to be serious bodily injury, but there is no likelihood of death. One last note, of the five hundred and fifty-two traffic stops made, our traffic unit made four hundred and forty-four of those. So, well done to the traffic unit and well done to the chief. If we can give them a round of applause. They do an amazing job keeping our community safe, especially during special events. And, uh, we're so, um, delighted by that. Additionally, in police, um, they made an, a remarkable rescue of an elderly woman who wandered away from her home. Um, she had, there, there was a late report by her elderly husband of, um, her wandering away. But they were able to find her. The chief, um, uh, activated this special response team, and he called out for other units to, uh, join us from other, uh, localities. And also called out fish and game. And within short order, they found her in a very thick, dense piece of woods. And so, she's safe. And, um, everybody's safe. And that's an amazing outcome. So, again, congratulations, chief. Uh, Lieutenant John Borzner graduated from the University of Louisville Southern Police Institute Command Officer Development Course. It's a leadership course, five months of intensive training in two weeks, um, um, uh, are also held in Claremont. And we congratulate Lieutenant Borzner for, um, accomplishing that training. It's also important, and the chief does an excellent job of this, is ensuring his people get the appropriate training. And especially as they move up the ranks. So, thank you, chief. Uh, fire has, uh, three, had three candidates, and two have been hi- three have been hired. And there are two remaining spots open. He's had a little bit of a spat of people retiring or people going into dentistry instead of fireworks. So, uh, uh, but he's, he does a great job. And, and we're happy that we're able to do that. Um, Public Works, we, uh, we're having a meeting with Advent Health regarding the mental health initiative for our, 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 our park. And meeting on March twenty-eighth with A one A North, um, Business Coalition to talk about transportation. And then, um, IT, um, is working, um, they've issued an RFP for a telecommunications consultant to help us with our, like, twenty-five-year-old phone system, literally. Um, it has not been upgraded. Uh, we had a number of systems damaged through, um, Hurricane Ivan. Uh, Public Works had some considerable damage, so they have their calls routed to come back into them because they can't find the parts. It's so old. So, um, we're looking forward to doing that. And we've made, and IT has been working hard to up, um, date the police laptops. They, um, updated the software on a hundred and sixty laptops at the police and fire department. And they're attempting to, uh, recruit, um, an additional hire for one of our employees who moved on to another location. So, that was a busy, um, week or so for us. And thank you for indulging me. I'm not usually that long, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Assistant city manager, Claire Whitley. Thank you. Uh, city attorney, Randy Hayes.
Actually, I do.
Wow.
Um, uh, I may, I may, um, have a likelihood of needing to have a litigation shade meeting with the commission on three pending litigation matters. Um, the statute requires that I make a public announcement. Then we have to publish that. Uh, and then we go into, into the shade meeting. Um, we have three cases on, on the two-week, uh, trial period, um, in, uh, in May. I think it's May fifteenth, I think. And those cases are Jordan Van Nonis, Peggy O'Wright Cummings, and Frank Sampson. They're three separate cases. Uh, there's a possibility we're still trying to resolve those. If we do, um, that would come before the commission. But if we don't, then, um, I'd like the opportunity to go into a shade meeting and, uh, get some direction advice from the commission, make sure that we're on the right path. And if we don't get them resolved, uh, they're scheduled for trial during that two-week period unless, unless they get bumped to a, a, a subsequent, uh, trial period. Um, that's it for me. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
We don't have a date, but we'll coordinate that through the city manager's office.
Perfect. Thank you. Alright. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Talland.
Well, I would have to start out by saying aloha to all my commissioners, since I just got back from vacation. Um, I just wanna officially congratulate the Adams Cameron Group for them always giving back to the community. You know, they're, they're, they're such, I'm sorry, good folks. And they're, they're always giving, make our community a better place. Also, congrats to Chris and Kelly, um, for their exceptional service to the city regarding their finance, regarding our financial affairs. They, they never lead us wrong. They, they, they do a very, um, my words aren't very good. I haven't slept for a while. Um, a very strong budget. And I'm very, um, happy to, to work with them. Um, Main Street met last night. Um, they have their, um, Celtic Festival coming up. I'm not sure the date. Maybe one of my fellow commissioners will know, but it is very soon. And I'm pretty sure it's, um, it will be.
April, I think, April.
I think it's April fifth. Or that's Saturday, Sunday.
I think it's April fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and also the sidewalk banding will be starting soon, working with, um, FDOT as well. Um, I did just go to that FDOT, um, project that was right before the meeting on the Water Oak Project. And I was listening some, to some residents, providing some active input on that. So, it's, it's always good when you have these meetings, when you're asking for public to come and give their thoughts, that you actually show up and, and talk about what's important. And, and we do find good ideas from, from the residents. So, I was, I was happy to see that happening. Um, and also with the, with, um, I think it was Sean that came up and talked about the, um, the, uh, traffic on Macintosh. So, thank you for coming up and sharing with us your issues there. Hope we can find some resolution. Um, on good news, I did find out that the, the, um, Community Gardener, Vatner Park, held their first educational program on Saturday, March seventeenth. I was not there. But, um, the Garden Club of Halifax Country, um, had a project for the Cub Scout. I don't know the troop number, but there were seventeen Cub Scouts and parents that came. And the opportunity was to, uh, teach the Cub Scouts all about native plants and critters that live in the garden. And they were, did activities to be able to, uh, get badges for their belts. So, it was very successful. And then we took the opportunity to educate parents on native landscape. So, um, it was very well received. And, um, I'm really proud of the Garden Club and what they were able to do. And, and, um, the feedback is the agenda was so well. I think it's something we'll be able to replicate in the future. So, um, and the, just as a side note, that woman that was lost, that our police were able to find, was actually a participant at the, um, Vatner Park. She, I found that she was a lady that I used to play tennis with a long time ago. And she just got very confused in her backyard. And, and, um, she was part of that program. And she really enjoyed it as well. So, thank you to the police department and fire department and all the other ancillary, um, services that came in and, and helped find her and bring her back. So, thank you and good night.
Thank you, commissioner, and welcome home. Uh, Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I met with Joyce yesterday. Just raised an issue about taking out some of the mulch and the medians out here. You know, we, we spray it and spray it, spray it. It's added. But I think we need the time to shave it and, um, start fresh. I had a call with the chief and Lisa at the PAL, just to inform me about the amazing program that they have. Just wondered if we could maybe highlight the great work that this program does on our website and social media. Just to, I was unaware of just the outstanding work that they do. It's amazing. Um, congratulations to the police department for the outstanding accreditation report. It's awesome. Leisure services, the, when we look at that, uh, janitorial contract that we approved tonight, a large portion of that is leisure services, um, the fields and bathrooms and everything. Just wondering that we may need to look, uh, in the future of dedicating money to fix and repair items out at the sports complex. There's, um, some metal shade stuff that's kind of deteriorating. And then maybe we need to increase the funds to, um, to keep those items up. Um, do we have any idea when the Timber Creek Apartments project is coming before us? I know that's been postponed twice. I just think the public needs to know. Uh, it'd be nice to know if we have a date of when that's gonna come forward.
So, tentatively, April eighteenth is what they're shooting for. We have a, a, I'd say conceptual submittal. They're supposed to get us more information. And then we will, um, give that to our distribution list as well as putting on our website. And it'll be re-advertised.
Thank you. And my last is, Joyce, do we have an ETA on the light replacement on the pier out of the bridge? I know we're waiting on parts or...
We're having difficulty getting...
Understood. Thank you. And with that, have a good evening.
Thank you, commissioner and Commissioner Persis.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening again, everyone. Um, I also too wanna congratulate, um, the chief for getting such a great, um, I guess, result from your, whatever, your audit. Oh, you still have, but we know we're gonna hear great things. We know that. But congratulations. It sounds like it's gonna be wonderful. And I also too wanna, you know, just congratulate the Adams family formally. They're just a wonderful family here in our community and been, and have been here ever since I've been here, which was when I was born. So, everybody knows about that family. And, uh, you know, they're just, they're just fabulous. And they do just give back and help our community so much. And also, I wanna also just, again, congratulate Chris and Kelly for their hard work. I mean, they keep us straight as along with Joyce, um, with our finances and budget. So, you all just do such a great job. It's just so wonderful. Um, I did want to let everyone know that, um, I am on the board for the First Step Shelter. And I'm gonna be representing our city commission on that board. And so, I, over spring break, I had the opportunity to go tour it and visit. And, um, I met with Victoria Falberg, who, who was kind of in charge out there. And I'd never been there, you know, ever before. So, it was really eye-opening. It's really quite a wonderful place. And for those of you that have never been there, it's kinda like a place where, you know, you get homeless people to help them get a permit, to get a permit.
to get permanent housing, and um, and they work really, really hard to do it. Um, they have, um, i- it's just like, you know, the rooms where they sleep, they have clothes they can go get, it's just, it's wonderful that we have that for our, the people in our community. But the good news is, the shelter caseworkers have helped more than four hundred and ten First Step recipients, residents rather, find a place to live since opening in December of twenty nineteen, and that's a lot of people that they've helped. Um, right now, what they're trying to do is create affordable housing on their property that would include much of the same support that the residents get inside that temporary shelter, so they're looking at possibly purchasing used, like, say, portable classrooms or portable homes, and dividing them up so residents could live there on the property, whether they place them in that parking lot, because the parking lot's huge, or somewhere out around the surrounding area. So um, that's what they're, that's what our May second board meeting is gonna be about, um, and they would like the funds to come from private donations, not any tax dollars. Um, and basically, they are looking for about a dozen mobile home structures, and that would be, provide place for about thirty-three tenants there. So I will definitely keep you updated on what happens um, with the First Step Shelter, but again, it was, it was really eye-opening, I think we all need to count our blessings, how fortunate we are, um, there's a lot of people striving just, you know, to find a place to live and be safe at night, so um, I'm just grateful that our community is, is doing this for these people. And with that, I'll say good night, I hope you have a safe evening.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I will uh, echo the, the sentiments of the City Commission, Chief Godfrey, congratulations, I know we're gonna get a great report, we have a great, great Police Department, and uh, y'all do great things. Of course, have to share a little bit of love with the Fire Department, um, Chief, Chief Bailey, I want to let you know that uh, Saturday evening, I was watching a little show called On Patrol Live, and I'm not sure if you all are aware or not, but uh, there was a traffic accident, uh, that was being worked in Ormond Beach, and our Ormond Beach Fire Department guys were out there, uh, assisting the Sheriff's Office, so, you know, kudos to our, our fire guys, they do a great job. Um, on March thirteenth, a few of us, and this, I know uh, Mayor Partington and, and Commissioner Sargent and I attended the uh, the YMCA uh, dinner at the Hard Rock, and uh, I know about a million dollars was raised that night for the, for the YMCA, and, and if you just look at a lot of the, the different programs that the YMCA offers to our community, uh, you know, they, they do a fantastic job, we're so, so fortunate to have folks like Charlie Lidecker leading that uh, that organization, and uh, congratulations to them, that was, that was a heck of a, heck of an evening. Um, I also wanna thank uh, or congratulate Kelly and Chris uh, for keeping us straight on the budget, they do a heck of a job, and uh, we're, we're very fortunate to have them as well. Mr. Mayor, thank you for including me with the Adams Cameron uh, presentation, they uh, they certainly are a success story of Volusia and Flaver County, it's been around for sixty years, that's, that's quite a long time for a family business. Um, I wanna thank Kevin Gray and Joyce for your attention to the South Beach Street sidewalks, I guess Miss Lamott is uh, is, is pretty satisfied of what we've done so far, so I wanna thank you on that. And uh, lastly, I'll, I'll end with uh, congratulating somebody on a milestone, and I think uh, someone who's sitting here at the end of the, the dais is gonna be with the city of Ormond Beach thirty years, come the end of this month, so uh, congratulations, Randy.
Nice.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say good evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and uh, Commissioner, you covered everything, thank you for your involvement in this community. The only uh, addition that I had tonight was, I had the opportunity this morning to drive around Ormond Beach to several different schools with our school board member, uh, former mayor Carl Persis, and uh, Billy Joe from Realty Pro Title, uh, working with the Chambers Program where they recognize the teachers of the quarter. We're lucky in our city to have a program like that, and to be able to recognize the exceptional teachers who work so hard every single day in our classrooms in our community. Uh, the principals are so grateful that we do that program, the teachers, uh, some of them cry, uh, they can't believe they're, they're getting the recognition for, for the many months of hard work, but it's, it's an awesome program, and I'm honored to be a part of it, and uh, I think it gives the opportunity to highlight some of the exceptional professionals that the school board has working, working for them, so I just wanted to bring that up. And with that, at uh, I don't know who's gonna get the award tonight, seven fifty-seven, we are adjourned. Thank you, awesome.